All right, the time is now 7:03 and we have a quorum present, so we will go ahead and start this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey?
Here.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The first item on the agenda, or next item on the agenda, is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from 10:00, 6:25, the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes, and 10:13, 2025, City Council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantial corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Those minutes are approved. Next, we have additions to the agenda. Are there any additions? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to presentations and public input. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak tonight, please feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Hello again. My name's Ben Jocelyn. I'm a member of the public and resident here in Urbana. Wanted to talk just briefly about sort of my reaction to last meeting in which we, as a city, promoted Michael Cervantes to be the Deputy Chief of Police.
There you go.
And I just wanted to say, you know, public input's always scattered. The feelings of the community isn't always cohesive and information's tough, and I know that we're all dealing with a whole bunch of pieces. What I would have liked to see is an acknowledgement of a past of conduct in one way and a promise to do it differently in the future. And I got mostly from sort of the talking about his promotion, a talking about public comment, and some of the language they used that was inflammatory and these sorts of pieces. But, and I actually really appreciate the police chief sort of afterwards sending an email to say that he would like to heal from that history. He was not the chief of police in that moment. I would like to see healing and a recognition of where we're trying to have the police be, because, you know, that was a moment five years ago when the city said, "This is not what we want to see." The council believed that it wasn't what we want to see enough to sort of begin this process of an alternative to, alternative task force and alternatives to public safety. And I commend you for that. But in the time, someone who's involved has now been promoted twice, has been put in a position of leadership, and in the news gazette the day after, there's an article that comes out that sort of describes how he doesn't believe he did anything wrong. And individual actions may not, in that moment, have required someone to be fired, or make it so that they don't deserve to be promoted in the future. But I want an affirmative statement of what we want policing to look like here if we're going to put that person into leadership. And I've yet to see that, and I know that there's wide sentiment that what happened on that day is not what we want to see as a police force. And I would like to see the promise of what we want the police force to look like in the future as we move forward. And I know that you all are working on that. But that's the kind of accountability that I was talking about when I talked about it then. And I think that, yeah. Anyway, you know that that's my position. I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, please feel free to come up, or if there are any emails that need to be read. Not aware of any. Okay, seeing no further input. I don't, I'm not aware of any presentations for tonight, so the next item is a staff report, Police Services for Special Events.
Thanks. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. Good evening, council members. First off, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to go over the No Kings protest event with you. To my right is newly appointed Lieutenant Gardner. He's going to oversee the Patrol Division. One of the things that we looked at was, what are the potential risks that come along with a crowd of this size? And now Lieutenant Gardner has operated for several years on the Metro SWAT team, so he brought a great deal of expertise when it came to that in the planning stages. So he's here tonight for two reasons. One, to get the exposure of this talking in front of you, and then for any, like, technical expertise questions. He's here to help me out with that. All right. All right. So on October 18th, 2025, the Urbana Police Department, in cooperation with the Champaign County Sheriff's Office and our regional partners, managed a large-scale event, the No Kings Protest. That protest drew approximately 4,000 participants to downtown Urbana. This was the second major demonstration of its kind in 2025, and we approached it with one goal: to protect everyone's safety while allowing full exercise of the First Amendment rights. I'm proud to say that through coordination, professionalism, and restraint, the event concluded with no injuries, no arrests, and no property damage. Our officers, along with those from the Champaign County Sheriff's Office, University of Illinois Police Department, Champaign Police Department, Rantoul Police Department, and Urbana Public Works adapted dynamically. When a smaller faction deviated from the permitted route, rather than escalating, we prioritized de-escalation and safety, blocking streets to prevent harm to the marchers and motorists alike. The activation of additional personnel, Public Works, and our regional partners came at a cost, which is summarized in the cost analysis that I will be showing in the presentation. These figures reflect personnel expenses only, not equipment, fuel, or administrative costs. Most importantly, this event demonstrated both the strength and limits of our current staffing. Without the assistance from our partner agencies, Urbana could not have managed a crowd of this size in event of this magnitude safely. So an overview of the event. You said there's 4,000 approximate people that showed up. It was a very, very large crowd. It was a, one thing to look at from the Bennett Building as we looked down and just saw the crowd of people. It was an extraordinary event. The primary organizer, which I cannot thank them enough for reaching out to us, was Champaign County Indivisible. So I just happened to field that email from their safety marshal, and I, again, cannot thank them enough for having the forethought to reach out to us ahead of time, because there were some things that they didn't consider, there were some things that we didn't consider, but through a collaborative effort, we were able to work those things out and make sure that the primary goal was, we wanted all of the participants to be safe. Champaign County Indivisible had listed about nine groups, so there were subgroups and organizations that were meant to speak at either the rally itself or having different participants throughout the route. The duration was scheduled from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Again, the goal were, the goals were to protect rights, ensure safety, and safeguard property. This is a photo from the Daily Illini of the crowd. I failed to mention in the, in the opening statement that Urbana Fire was also a part of this. MetCAD was also a huge part, because MetCAD gave us a dedicated dispatcher, which we later were extremely thankful for, because there was an incident where somebody was injured, and I do not know how they were injured. It was nothing to do with police contact or anything like that, but I believe somebody hurt their leg. And because we had that dedicated channel, and we had event staff on the ground, we were able to coordinate the ambulance getting in and getting that guy the medical attention that he needed, because it was just a little bit beyond the capability of the organizing staff. So the command post was at the Scott Bennett Building. It provided us overview right into the front of the Champaign County Courthouse, so we were able to see a little bit higher and see what was going on, at least in that area. So pre-event, we had a police briefing. We also had a Zoom with the event organizer, and I believe one of his partners that was in on the planning. And then, again, right before the event kicked off, we went down and we met with not only the safety marshal, but all of the safety ambassadors that they had there that day. There were plenty of people with yellow vests and radios. We made sure that they had communications, and that we had direct communication with the organizer UPD staffing that day, we had three sergeants and three officers were scheduled to work, so that was the total of our staffing that day. We ended up mandating in four additional officers to come in and help. And I say mandatory, because we put up an overtime sign-up. They didn't sign up for it, so we ended up telling them, you know, based on the size, "You guys have to come in." Partnered resources included Mobile Field Force. We had them on standby, but they were not present. We had CCSO, Champaign County Sheriff's Office, University of Illinois, Metro on standby with a react team. So basically, in layman's terms, what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that if a violent event kicked off, that we had enough resources on hand to be able to go into a crowd of potentially four. Initially, we were thinking it was going to be between 3,000 and 5,000. It ended up being around four. But with a crowd that large, we have to have a team that could go in if things did get violent and somebody was being attacked, that we could go in and extract that person to get them out. Or if a business or a government building, or anything like that, was being taken over, we had to have that team on standby that would be able to react. Public Works provided concrete barriers and rolling barricades. They did a phenomenal job. One of the things after, one of the incidents up north, you know, a counter protester essentially rolled through the parade and ran over several protest participants, and we didn't, or parade participants, and we didn't want to see that happen there. Public Works, again, did a great job of blocking them off so that vehicles wouldn't be able to easily enter that area. Again, MetCAD gave us a dedicated channel and a dispatcher that day who monitored communications. So the event in action, there was a peaceful march from the Champaign County Courthouse through downtown. The group went the opposite way, but we were able to quickly adapt, adapt, and luckily, because our Public Works Division, I know Vince Gustafson's over there, and Andy Murphy did, Andy Murphy was the onsite supervisor, did such a wonderful job, we were able to basically flip-flop the plan and move our resources and patrol cars to be able to block the streets, because they went the opposite way. So I'm very happy and grateful that they were there and able to do that. After the march, there was one subgroup that deviated. They were a little more, say, aggressive or vocal. At one point, they were yelling, "We're ready for a fight. We're ready for a fight." We had a police officer stationed by. They started moving barricades. We had the event organizer go talk to them. He was unable to reason with them. We pulled our officer back and let them talk, because they weren't doing anything violent at that time. So we wanted to de-escalate and remove ourselves from that situation, so that's what we did. Officers maintained a hands-off but safety-first posture, which in essence, we are there to address anything, you know, violent, destructive, depending on the level of destructiveness. But overall, we wanted the event organizers to handle it themselves, and that was what we discussed in the safety brief. We, when the group deviated, they marched in a route that we had not discussed. They started taking over Vine Street. They marched north on Vine Street to one of our busiest intersections, and that would be Five Points at Cunningham and University. Rather than escalating the situation, initially, we attempted to try to make contact with that subgroup leader, and were unable to do so. They continued to march, went westbound on University, and we provided orders to our three patrol officers that were then dedicated to that detail, and any other officers that we could pull from regular patrol to block intersections so that cars didn't hit anybody, and so that there couldn't be any direct confrontation with motorists. Ultimately, by the end, the crowd was de-escalated naturally by our hands-off approach. There were no arrests or damage. There was a deployed drone, and that drone belonged to Champaign County Sheriff's Office. It was deployed after the route deviation and traffic obstruction at a main intersection. As you guys can see here, this was the planned route. It was, they said they went the opposite direction, but we adapted to that. Ultimately, what ended up happening was they went north on Vine all the way to Five Points, and I have a map of that in a second. The legal basis for this was reasonable suspicion to prevent imminent harm, and I say imminent harm, because it was directly en route of a hospital corridor, and that's one of the things that we've discussed. Luckily, we had touched base with people about a week before, so Carl Security and the ER director were made aware of the march happening. We did tell them that the protest route was not going towards Carl, but we wanted them to be aware, no matter what. So when the route did go that way, what our main concern was, that main entrance off Kohler and University is how ambulances get people into the ER. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be blocked, or that it could get, we could reroute traffic if we needed to. So having that drone in the air gave us the ability to see what was going on, monitor traffic, and then see anywhere else that we had to block off traffic to make sure cars weren't going around. Again, we wanted to make sure everybody was safe. There was no facial recognition used. It was compliant with the Drone Act. When I called the chief, the chief notified the mayor, and I told him, "Hey, we got these, this crowd. We're trying to make contact. We're unable to. They're going north on Vine, coming up to Five Points," which we know was one of our busiest intersections. The chief was actually getting a, an award at another place. He was there earlier, but he went out and tried to make contact with the crowd as well. So he was out there, boots on the ground, doing it, trying to, trying to encourage the crowd to be cooperative with us. This was the route that they took. They went north on Vine, except west on University. And you can tell here, this is Carl Hospital. This is the ambulance bay that they go into. This is the, this is the area that the ambulances take people. So luckily, the crowd, which was nowhere near 4,000, I forgot to mention that earlier, after the main rally and protest march was done, most of the crowd dispersed. There was about 300 that were reported to us at University and Vine. When we deployed the drone, which was at about Ray Street, because we knew they were continuing west, we gave the order for the crowd to get off of the roadway, to get out of the roadway. That wasn't a permitted route. It was unlawful at that point. We told them to get on the sidewalk. When we did that, most people in that crowd of about 300 dissipated. There were still about 50 or so, maybe 75, I believe it was closer to 50, that continued marching. So they went all the way to Kohler Avenue, south on Kohler, to east on Main Street, to back in front of the courthouse. The orders that we gave were, "Don't engage with them. Give them space. Let them get back." And by doing so, they ultimately dispersed. So the policy, policy compliance was consistent with the first, UPD First Amendment Assembly's policy, our priority life principle, and the Freedom of Drone Surveillance Act. Again, no excessive force, no arrests, no property damage. The cost overview was just personnel costs, and these were the agencies that provided costs, or I'm sorry, provided personnel. So this just includes personnel cost. It was around $15,400 is what it cost us, and that excludes salary, personnel, fuel, and equipment. What went well, there was strong inter-agency and community collaboration. There's adaptability, professionalism, and the de-escalation strategy that we employed was successful. Areas for improvement, we have tactical considerations that we need to work on, but the area that I think is most important for improvement is more than one person for real-time coordination with organizers. So we have different safety marshals, perhaps some of the subgroup organizations, because the Champaign County Indivisible, that was not the one, that was not the main group that deviated at the end. So in closing, there were no injuries. Police, we demonstrated restraint, cooperation. We highlighted some of the staffing limitations that we had at the time, and we want to continue investment in training and inter-agency coordination, having all the agencies work together. The big meeting that we had ahead of time with city leaders, city administrator Wyatt and Mayor Williams, that was, that was very beneficial for something like that, because we had to have contingencies in place in the event they went to campus, in the event they went to Champaign. And so working together with those agencies, as well as like the federal courthouse and Carl Hospital, was huge. And none of that would have been possible if they wouldn't have worked with us first. So I really do thank Champaign County Indivisible for this. In closing, publicly, I would like to thank Champaign County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Apperson, who was in the command post with Sergeant Gardner and I, as well as Deputy Chief for UFD, U of I Police Department Metro Lieutenant Rob Benoit, Lieutenant Lack, Lieutenants Bain, Gardner, as well as Sergeant Ruff, Hukin, and Hurley, and Ingram for their leadership during, during the protest. Lastly, Urbana Public Works specifically, Andy Murphy did a great job. In the end, this was a success, not because nothing happened, because something did and we had to deviate, but because we collaborated with citizens. Our officers maintained professionalism. We respected civil liberties, and we made decisions consistent with both law and departmental policy. Does anybody have any questions?
I saw James first. Go ahead.
All right, thank you for this. I have a, I have a question. This was a situation which was well-planned, well-communicated. We were able to do things. What does our plan look like when, for example, I think October 7th, there was a demonstration that started on the U of I quad, but the demonstration moved to like the intersection of Goodwin and Green? And there were people spontaneously demonstrating in the middle of what's a somewhat busy street. What, what's our plan for a spontaneous demonstration like that? Because I will tell you, in that particular case, you know, Goodwin, Goodwin and Green is a Urbana intersection, but it's on campus, so I understand there might be some question about who's coordinating what with regard to that. But there were car, people, potential interactions in that situation, and it didn't seem like, you know, we, we put up barricades or we tried to keep the car, you know, let the cars go around. They were still kind of intermingled. So what's our plan when it's spontaneous and the streets get full?
We have to improvise, adapt, and overcome, so we work with what we have on the street. And luckily, we have great partnerships with surrounding agencies, so our supervisors would get in touch with one another. Depending on the level of severity, we would potentially call in additional resources. We do have resources available through ILEUS, through the Mobile Field Force. We have, like I said, the Metro SWAT in the event that it is something that becomes violent, and we need a react team or cart capabilities. But for something that is spontaneous, this is, we just kind of have to adapt and deal with it as it comes. So we would like to, just with any other event, depending on who's the lead agency, make contact with whoever the leader of the organization is, or if there seems to be even an informal leader, and see if we can get them to an area that is safe. We want people to be able to exercise their First Amendment, but we don't want them in the roadway, you know, blocking traffic, potentially getting run over, or becoming violent. So we want to try to do everything that we can to make contact first and de-escalate the situation before it gets out of hand. But in the event that it does, those are some of the recourses that we do have in place.
I mean, I've seen situations, you use the police vehicles to like block off the road to improvise, right? But do we, do, can you call up Public Works and say, "Hey, this is going on. We need to block the street. It's 7:00 in the evening on a weekday."
Yes.
Do you have a route to do that?
They do have on-call people, and this would be something that would, of course, be dealt with, with the supervisor, depending on the level of personnel needed. Yeah, we would work with them, and in the instance that you, the example that you provided, we would work with U of I as well, determine what other non-law enforcement resources they could provide. I mean, if we're adapting and we're looking at potential emergency situations, depending on the size of the crowd, we would enlist fire as well, because they're here 24 hours. We would, We would do what we needed to do within our capabilities to make sure that everybody was safe.
All right. Thank you.
So Mary Alice next.
Thank you for the summary. I had two questions. The first one was, if you could go back a couple of slides where you were talking about the drones. One of your bullet points had their compliant with the Illinois Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act. And is that, that's just that, I thought at first it said complaint, but it's compliant, isn't it? Okay. And then you had mentioned that there was a Mobile Field Force. Can you describe what that is?
Sure. It's statewide. So it's through the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System through ILEUS. Essentially, what it is, is Mobile Field Force can be activated anytime there is a crisis, an emergency situation. For instance, when the tornado happened, I believe in Joplin, we deployed part of our team down there, and it was a group that trains together regularly. They organized by area. But we sent a team down there to help safeguard things like supplies, water, to make sure that there wasn't looting, anything like that. Basically, when there is a large crowd, these guys train together in riot-type situations. I believe we sent them up to the Democratic National Convention at one point. But it is essentially the guys that are out there with the shields and the masks, those are, there's those guys. So again, we did not have them on-site. I simply made a call to the commander and said, in the event something goes awry, would you guys be able to provide us resources? And if so, how many? And how long would it take for them to get there? So this is where our react team came in place. We had a small contingent that was off-site, again, because we didn't want to escalate the crowd. We wanted to keep them off-site. In the event that things did go awry, we could use them as a react team to get in there and to safely remove people. So Mobile Field Force, they were not activated. I just simply made a call and said, hey, this is what's going on. But there was, this was a nationwide event, so there were several other things going on. There was a No Kings protest at, I believe, in Bloomington. And then there was also ISU homecoming. So they were already on basically standby for whoever needed them.
Thank you. Mayor Williams?
I didn't have a question. I was just going to more so, you know, say, you know, I appreciate the approach in which was taken to, you know, and ensure that this was not only successful, but that it was safe. I got to experience firsthand, you know, Cervantes and his efforts in bringing everyone together from Urbana, Champagne, to county, you know, and any and everyone in between. And I also want to give a, just a shout out to Vince and the entire Public Works Department as well. This is what it's about, you know, the same team where it makes the dream work. This was a testament to that. So I just want to say publicly that I appreciate the work that you all put in to ensure that this took place and it was safe and successful. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Charisse?
Yes, I have a question.
Grace can I get you after, Charisse? Okay. Our Grace, go ahead.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, I'm sorry if I missed it, I got disconnected. When you talked about the finances, I was wondering what was the total cost to Urbana for this event supervisory and kind of itemized overtime for the PD in particular? So that's first question. Sorry, finance, that's finance isn't the cost for that involvement. And then my second question, a little more squishy. You mentioned about de-escalating by just backing off or being on standby, out of sight, not escalate tensions at the event, which seems to kind of acknowledge that police presence and proximity can escalate things. So I'm just wondering how we balance that with being ready to protect people, also realizing that just police presence has a cost and can make an escalation?
Sure. So first, I would want to address the cost to Urbana overall. It was approximately, and I can get you direct numbers, but it was approximately $6,000 between Urbana Police Department and Urbana Public Works. There was some funds that were used for equipment that Vince Gustafson included, but I did not include those for the equipment. I just included the personnel cost, and those were, again, approximate. So I can get you those direct numbers. I have no problem doing that. The other portion, I think, is a little bit more philosophical. When it comes to each individual situation, I believe that the totality is what is important. And in this situation, when I was referring to the de-escalation portion of it, when we were removing officers from the scene, we had police officers that were there from the beginning. Like I said, we went and we made contact with the event organizers from the beginning. We were in full uniform. We showed that we were there. We showed that we wanted to cooperate and collaborate with the people and that we were there to help. We weren't there to interfere. We had one of the teams that Champagne County indivisible requested towards the front of the protest and one towards the end of the protest, the march. That's what I'm talking about, to make sure that we were protecting all the marchers on both ends. So to say that we weren't present at all, I apologize for the context of that. When I was talking about us pulling away, it was when the crowd became more unruly, when things started to become unlawful, when they started to remove barricades. I can tell you, historically, in those situations, the police department are typically the first face of government. And a lot of the protests that were going on that day, they had problems with different government entities. What I wanted to do, and what we wanted to do in all of it, was take our officer out of that area to the best of our ability to avoid any type of escalation or targeting of that officer. As far as the react team, we weren't going to put them front and center until it needed to be done. And very fortunately for us, based on the totality, it didn't need to be done. So I wouldn't acknowledge that police mere presence just simply escalate things by their mere presence. I think you have to consider the context and the totality. And in this circumstance, giving protests in the past and seeing how things have happened, how police cars have been targeted, set on fire, flipped over, government buildings have been, what I wanted to do was take that out of the equation. So again, I wouldn't agree that just mere presence escalates. I would agree that, depending on the totality, that sometimes if we can take steps to remove a situation based on our past experience, we should do that. And that's what we did in this case.
Great. Did I see another hand? Yes, Charisse, someone?
No, I just wanted to add to Deputy Chief Cervantes. I know, I was at the other event that was going on at the same time. And I can actually say that we never knew that there was any kind of, anything else going on with the traffic situation at Five Points or any of that. And it was, it ended up being a really nice event. Chief Boone was late, but he eventually got there. And we were told too that he was handling another situation at the time. So I think that all of that, with everything going on, especially, I didn't know that there were 4,000 people at the No Kings thing, because there were at least 150 people at the other event as well. And I think that this was pretty well-managed and considering the fact that you also collaborated with the organizers. I think that makes a difference altogether when everybody works together.
Thank you for that, and Mayor, and everybody else. You know, I really do appreciate that commentary. The credit goes to the officers and everybody that was a part of it and it all coming together. And to Chief Boone's defense, he was over at the Command Center at the time before coming over to the other event. So when things started to calm down, the crowd started to dissipate after the original rally and march, that's when he left to go over to the other event that you were at. So then things, of course, started getting a little hairy, and that's when he was called.
Any other questions or comments? Good. Thank you both very much for your presentation. We will go ahead and move on. The next section is new business. And the first item is ordinance number 2025-11-028, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance. amend table VIIII to establish lower maximum building heights in the CMU Campus Mixed Use Zoning District in specific areas, Plan Case Number 2509-T-25. Olivia?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Just pulling up my presentation. So in the absence of having any planning staff in the Community Development Department, I will be presenting these cases to the council tonight. They've been recommended unanimously by the Plan Commission. I am not Kevin, so I'm lacking a little of his panache. And I'm just going to go ahead and read from my script. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions, but I'll make sure we have time for questions at the end as well. Okay, so this case is a text amendment, and the former zoning administrator, Kevin Garcia, proposed this text amendment to set different maximum building heights for the CMU zone. And that was to match the intent of the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. So you can see an excerpt from the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan here on the left. And it's the place type map in Imagine Urbana distinguishes between two different university neighborhoods, one north of Green Street and one south of Green Street. So this is the north of Green Street, and this is south of Green Street, by stating that the southern area is appropriate for up to five-story buildings, while the northern area is appropriate for taller buildings up to 120 feet, which is equivalent to about 10 to 11 stories here. While the area north of Green Street is appropriate for taller buildings, the area south of Green Street is not. The proposed amendment will align the CMU regulations with that intent. This is important because the city received a recent inquiry from Fairlawn Capital regarding the redevelopment of three adjacent parcels in this area. And we will hear about that case later tonight. Therefore, this inquiry made it a priority for us to consider this text amendment at this time. The proposed text amendment would also set lower maximum building heights, so 40 feet or three stories, for the CMU district in any other area of Urbana, which would make the CMU district an option in other places, but with buildings scaled more appropriately for those locations. The intent of this text amendment is to align the already approved and confirmed, excuse me, codified CMU district with the comprehensive plan, specifically to ensure development is contextual and appropriate for Urbana's neighborhoods. Lastly, on October 16th, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendment to council. So you'll see the, here, there are the two different areas. So for the northern area, the maximum height would be 120 feet. For the area south of Green Street, it would be 65 feet, which is equivalent to about five stories. And then in any other area, which is not identified in the comp plan, it's just a possible future option, it would be at 40 feet. Are there any questions?
Mary Alice?
Yeah. So I have two questions. The first one is, I like the idea of having a lower maximum height south of Green Street. I am curious about how the 40 feet that was not west of Lincoln was obtained. And the reason that I'm asking is because traditionally, like an R4, the maximum's 35. So I'd like to know, A, how we came to 40? And B, what are the other areas that are in this district that are not west of Lincoln?
So beyond, I'll answer your questions, but in reverse order.
Okay.
So beyond what you see here on this map, these sort of darker orange shapes, there are no CMU or neighborhood, university neighborhood place types identified. So it's purely hypothetical, the 40-foot concept for this CMU zoning. And then the way we arrived at 40 feet is, that is correct. The 35 feet would be typical for those zones, but we weren't, I believe Kevin didn't want to restrict building form based on a, I think he wanted to allow for a little bit of flexibility in building form based on the architecture of whatever that proposed structure would be. So I think it was meant to be as close to three stories as possible by still allowing for a little bit of flexibility.
Okay. So if I'm understanding you correctly, the only zones that are currently university district in which the CMU would be applied to would be anything west of Lincoln. There's no other zones that are, that would fall under that zoning district. There's no other areas in the city that would fall under that zoning district. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Then I guess I would like to say, I don't have particularly a problem with the areas as they now stand. I would like to bring it down to 35 feet instead of 40 feet to be in alignment with our other zoning districts, especially since it's just a hypothetical. So, thank you for that.
Any other questions? James?
Yeah, so I'm a little bit curious. Can you describe the circumstance that the 40-foot regulation would come into play? How does it even become relevant?
Yes. If we were to rewrite the zoning ordinance and potentially in the future, or, sorry, if we, well, actually, we don't have to rewrite the zoning ordinance because this text amendment would anticipate that. But if we were to, in the future, rezone any portion of Urbana to CMU, so from an existing, I don't know, zone to CMU, it would be capped at 40 feet.
So if we were to say the east side of Lincoln Avenue becomes, some section of that becomes part of
A university neighborhood.
CMU, then it would kick in.
That's right.
So any space that we would rezone to CMU would have that limitation.
That's correct.
But if we were rezoning, and this is just simplifying that, because if we were rezoning, we couldn't do a text amendment while we were rezoning. We can do that without touching the text, per se.
That's right.
That's just putting it there in case we forget what we're doing and add to it. And we want to keep this in the back of our head, that that's what we're going to do.
That's right. I believe the intent is to open up the possibility of a CMU district, which allows for sort of a more expansive mixed-use character in areas that we might not be able to identify right now as university neighborhoods, but might, you know, in the future, require rezoning to
But we could very easily just leave it out and worry about that when we decide we're going to start expanding CMU.
That would also be an option. Yep.
I would kind of lean towards, because Kevin will be a memory in somebody's mind when we start to talk about that, right? As opposed to how we got here in the first place, what the difference between 35 and 40 was supposed to be. So the new planner will get to tell us why that's important. I don't know if we can just drop that. What do you think?
If I'm
Mary Alice?
If I'm understanding what you're saying is that we just remove the 40 feet. So basically, the CMU district is only capping the 120 and the, I can't remember if it's, thank you, 65 for anything that is west of Lincoln. And then if the CMU district is applied to east of Lincoln, we'll address it at that time. But since there's no, there's no specific plot that is east of Lincoln, we don't have to deal with it right now. Is that what, yeah, so just removing it?
I'm sure it'll come up if we start to do that kind of rezoning.
Yes, I'm positive it will come up. I am totally fine with just removing that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Well, since I
I have a question.
Oh.
Sorry. Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. So
So you're saying that this is coming up now because there's developers interested in this particular area, is that right?
That's correct.
Because it was just, which makes sense, but also I think that we've definitely heard that there's some desire from the community to be included and informed in zoning changes and do them kind of holistically and comprehensively with the comprehensive plan. So I think this makes sense if it is a timely thing for this area. And then I'm not following what James and Mary Alice are proposing. Were there any actual changes? I guess there was no voted amendment, so I guess I wasn't following that line of thought in if there are any proposed changes.
I think to clarify, I think the conversation so far has been around the 40-feet piece. So there's a 120, 65, and 40. There's nothing that the 40-feet requirement would apply to at this time, so I think the conversation has been focused on taking that out, and that might speak to your other point, Grace, of having the opportunity for the public to be part of that process about what the designations or requirements for future CMU districts might be, because there are no other districts that currently applies to aside from the two where the 120 and the 65 would take effect. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Grace, do you have any other questions?
I guess just if there is an amendment, if we're actually talking about excluding the 40 feet, which I'm fine with keeping it, I'll say, I guess, just while I'm unmuted, I'm fine with it as a, and being in line with other campus mixed-use areas.
Okay, thank you. Sharice?
I do have one question regarding, actually, the 120-feet thing. If in fact, because of the fact that there are apartment buildings that were, I don't know if they're still owned by you or I or not, in my ward, that are basically, I want to say maybe four stories. It's, they're now called Onyx and Link, but they used to be North and South Something or Other. Would that CMU zoning apply to properties owned anywhere in the city? Because it would be east of Lincoln Avenue where they have this, where they have these apartments now, which I think are only, let's just say at the 65-foot height. Would those, would that 120-feet apply to if they chose to build a 10-story apartment building on the north side of town?
So without knowing the exact address of those two buildings, it's hard for me to answer off the top of my head, but if you see here, this orange polygon here that's at the intersection of Stoughton and Lincoln, that is the CMU area now. So it's an existing zoning district that was approved and codified in 2024, and it only exists where it's mapped. So if those buildings are not located within that zone, then they cannot take advantage of that zoning. They have to be located in that district.
But in the future, if that, if it becomes a future ownership of University of Illinois, would that CMU zoning apply to, and the area that I'm talking about is just behind Eads, just behind the fire, just about a block from the current firehouse? Would those, would those properties, would they be allowed to build a 10-story building on those properties? You're saying, I'm just saying, in the, in future, would we vote for it to be CMU? Or would, how would that, what would that process be?
Right, to answer initially, the process, if those addresses or if those parcels are not mapped within a CMU district, and there was a desire to have those parcels rezoned to CMU, that would need to be brought to plan commission as a rezoning, and then either denied or recommended to council for approval. And just because there'd be a university ownership or university use of the parcel, it doesn't automatically make it CMU. You have to map that area intentionally.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
So I think perhaps what Sharice, if I can glom onto what you're saying, I think the issue here is because we're defining east and west Lincoln, and we're not defining University, Pennsylvania, then theoretically, the way it is written right now, the CMU, the way it is written right now, if the two properties that Sharice is talking about, which happen to be on the west side of Lincoln, if they get rezoned CMU, then the 120 applies to them. And so I feel like the way to bound this is to make the 120 go no farther north than university.
I would agree.
James?
I would like to point out that if they became the property of the University of Illinois, they would not be subject to our zoning anymore. That's why that one area is all blue in that picture that we were just looking at, because it doesn't, Urbana zoning does not apply to the university. We don't, we can't bind them.
Apologies, the resolution on this is not very good.
Lip, while you're looking at, can I ask you another question? Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we don't actually have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
So this is supposed to be limited to questions, and I feel like we're kind of getting into discussion.
Appreciate that, yep. Just ask one more question. Do the current areas that are zoned CMU, is there another way of describing them other than by geographic markings, like CMU 1 and CMU 2, just to alleviate those concerns of, if I'm hearing things correctly, that there's an interest in taking out language about restrictions for future CMU areas, which would cap it at 40 feet, right? So if that piece is removed, I hear that there's a, it sounds like there's a concern that, you know, the 120 could apply to other things that that geographic area. So I guess I'm curious, is there another way of describing the existing CMU areas to provide a little bit more clarity for, otherwise, I think, maybe setting some additional boundaries of the described, described area. I'm making up words now, but I don't know if that question makes sense.
It's an interesting point. I need to look at the zoning ordinance really, because the definition of CMU is codified. There should be no lack of clarity on where that area is and how it applies. I do understand the point about bounding the language as it relates to height limits, but because we only have the two theoretic, I mean, this actually isn't CMU right now, right? The rezoning would, or the text amendment would. Hold on. I understand the question, I think. Thank you so much. I would be hesitant to add extra description to the ZMU, CMU zone as defined in the ordinance without having plan commission review that, because that is not what this is. This is simply to cap the height, because right now, if anyone rezones to CMU anywhere in Urbana, they could theoretically build up to 120 feet. So this is actually meant to put a restriction in place to prevent that from happening, to actually have it be more contextual. And the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as a university neighborhood, which is aligned with the principles of CMU, where we want to see an addition of mixed-use development with housing at an appropriate scale. So this amendment is actually designed to almost like prevent the 10-story blanket from applying everywhere. So I think that it's actually working towards the intent of what the council members have been asking towards, and I just would be hesitant in adding extra definitions or descriptions without having a careful review of the zoning ordinance to go with that.
Yeah, to clarify, I'm not asking us, for us to redefine it, I just mean in terms of describing it, right? If like, if there was an existing, another term that we could use to clarify, or if it sounds like there might be a need just to put some of those geographic boundaries in place. James?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that that map that we were just looking at is a little bit
James, is your mic on? People are having a hard time hearing you.
I think it's on. Can you hear me? Well, I think that map that we were just looking at just a moment ago, which was the comprehensive plan, is a little bit misleading, because it had that university neighborhood as a clump, which was actually two different areas that were zoned differently. Because the properties on University Avenue and like Gather are business zoning, they're not the university, the, whatever that CMU is. So that might be confusing to show that and try to discuss what's going on there, and I can see where Sharice, looking at that map, might think, oh, this could cross University Avenue, but, but the, the CMU does not cross University Avenue. It stops just south of the building that like Einstein's bagels is in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that is the comprehensive plan, that's university neighborhood, which is a mixture of a couple of zoning types in it.
So just to go back to the clerk's point, and I think that clarification is helpful, but I do want to make sure we're sticking to questions, and then we'll move on to discussion. Are there any others questions? Mary Alice?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, final call for questions. Grace, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to move on to the regular agenda. Ordinance number 2025-11-028, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance amend table 4-3, sorry, 6-3 to establish lower maximum building heights in the CMU campus mixed-use zoning district in specific areas, plan case number 2509-T-25, with the change, two changes. One is to remove the last sentence in number 19, which says, "In all other areas, the maximum height is 40 feet, the maximum of three stories," to strike that language. And the second one is to add in, the second sentence says, "In areas north of Green Street and west of Lincoln," we need to add in, "and south of university, the maximum height is 120 feet." And I will speak to it if I get a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before I second, you want to change the table to, right, to strike
Thank you.
The 40?
Yes, so strike the, in the table, for maximum height of principal structure feet, strike the 40, 40 off of that table, thank you.
So I heard a second from Sharice, are you still
Uh-huh, I'll second that, too.
Okay. Moved by Mary Alice for the regular agenda with amendments as stated, seconded by Sharice. Is there any further discussion? Mary Alice?
Yeah, so I appreciate everybody's conversation regarding the zoning and the best way to handle this. I think one thing that Kevin really drilled into me was this concept of a zoning district. Usually when we think of zoning districts, we think of an area, geographic area, but a zoning district is not a geographic area necessarily. It can exist throughout the city, right? So there could be a zoning district of CMU if it aligned with the Imagine Urbana plan in, on Green Street, close to Lincoln Square, for example. So it's nothing, it doesn't have to be continuous, right? There can be zone, they can, things can be zoned, different things on the same block. And I just think for clarity purposes, that it's necessary to put that boundary, that north boundary of university, because I can see potentially in the future, a corridor, and I think even Imagine Urbana has that corridor going up Lincoln Street. So really defining this as what I think layman's people would think is the university district, right? The boundary is university, Lincoln, et cetera, et cetera. But in our codifying of our zoning ordinance, there is no such thing. So that's why I think it's necessary for us to put in that, that northern boundary.
Any further discussion? Great. Since this is not final
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Grace, sorry. There's the delay sometimes takes a little bit. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand the changes that are embedded within the motion for approval. So the south of university, are you talking about the second sentence in the changes, where it says, "In areas north of Green Street and west of Lincoln, maximum height of 120?"
Yes.
And that's where you want to add the south of university, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And removing that last sentence in that same kind of paragraph, you want to remove, I guess, the last, yeah, that is a full sentence, "In all other areas, maximum height is 40."
Yes.
Could you explain that? Is that the common? So I guess my question to whomever, maybe Olivia, of what is the maximum height in other CMU? Is it already 40? I guess if so, I'm not understanding why removing that.
The, the maximum height for any CMU district right now, before this text amendment, is 120 feet.
So Grace, this may have been when you got cut off. This is supposed to be a protection for future CMU districts, but the question was why 40 feet versus 35, which is standard in other zoning areas? It's probably not the right word. So I think that there was an interest in tabling that discussion of 40 versus 35 feet for a future discussion, since it doesn't currently apply to any other part of the city. The only two CMU districts that exist are the two that are being discussed at 120 and 60. Well, one of them exists right now and is 120, and that trying to set some parameters to keep it a little bit lower in another area of the city, which would be more compatible with its current makeup. Trying to help synthesize things. You're right, it's not easy to fall into Kevin's shoes explaining things. Yeah, go ahead, Grace.
Um, so then I guess I sort of understand why removing it, because it seems like right now that there's developers there that could put up something of 120 feet right now. And I guess you're saying that that's what we're okay with, or it seems like there's some concern on maximum height? And for me, 35 versus 40 is not that big a deal, and it sounded like what we heard from Olivia is that we might want to check, or maybe that was for the first point about south of university, but I think also listening to checking with some of the others, I guess, non-planning staff, but maybe commission or whoever else, before making some of those changes. So I guess also follow-ups for next week would be appreciated.
So right now, the, with the motion on the table, it would read so that there's, the intent of this text amendment would move forward, it's just that in any areas that are not north of Green Street, west of Lincoln Avenue, and south of university, or areas that are south of Green Street and west of Lincoln Avenue, like, we basically would have to do this exercise again if we, or we would need to revise the zoning ordinance in the future. And that's fine, that could be, that could be something that could be done.
So is that, I'm sorry, may I say, is that what I'm missing here, is that the one area that CMU is in that second sentence about north of Green, west of Lincoln, and the other CMU block that we have is south of Green, west of Lincoln? And so you're saying there is no current properties outside of that that this 40 would apply to? Is that what I've been missing?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, as stated, and this is not final action, so we'll do a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, please say nay. That motion passes. Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. All right, well now we'll move on to ordinance number 2025-11-029, an ordinance to approve the preliminary planned unit development at 704 East Windsor Road, Plan Case Number 2510-PUD-25.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a preliminary PUD. I believe this body has experience with preliminary and final PUDs being presented at once. At least that was the experience of the the most recent experience of the plan commission. So I do just want to stress that this is just the first part of a two-part PUD process, and this is the preliminary portion, which is the first part. So we are presenting an application by Wes Taylor for preliminary approval of a residential planned unit development for the former Windsor Swim Club site at 704 East Windsor Road. Section 13 of the zoning ordinance requires review and approval of both a preliminary and final. This is for preliminary only. The site is a 4.1, is 4.1 acres located along the north side of Windsor Road, just east of Meadowbrook Park. It is the former home of the Windsor Swim Club, which is fondly remembered by many people, but after 43 years in business, the club ceased operation in 2009 due to economic hardship. After the swim club closed in 2009, local architect Gary Olden purchased the site. In 2011, Mr., excuse me, Gary Olson, not Gary Olden, Gary, Mr. Olson gained approval to rezone the site from conservation, recreation, and education to R3 single and two-family residential, opening the potential path for residential on this site. Gary Olson also received approval for a preliminary PUD to redevelop the site with a mix of residential buildings. Then in 2012, he received approval for a final PUD with a variety of housing types, but he then changed the plans and came forward again in 2013 with a new preliminary and final for a variety of housing types on that site. And in all cases, the PUD was approved. However, despite all these plans and attempts, Mr. Olson did not end up building on the site and the development attempts waffled. Mr. Olson cited difficulties in securing funding for construction and the challenging market conditions after the 2008 housing crisis. As a result, the site has sat vacant and underutilized since 2009, which is about 16 years. Recently, Wes Taylor, who's a local developer and builder, has acquired the site with the hope to bring new life and also bring much-needed residential to this area, residential housing to this area. The proposed development is residential with two single-family homes identified here in yellow, 10 duplexes, which are sort of in pink, and then two eight-unit townhomes, which are in orange, for a total of 38 residential units. The preliminary plans include a U-shaped road connecting, connecting to Windsor Road and a detention basin on the site. So this is the road connecting to Windsor, and this is the detention basin here. The applicant has stated that he plans to sell the single homes and duplexes, and plans to retain ownership of the townhomes to lease those out as rentals. This will introduce a variety of different housing types across the income and housing needs spectrum. This development brings 38 units to Urbana's housing stock with a browsing, a variety of housing types at scale that is appropriate for the neighborhood, and it would also redevelop an area that's already served by services and infrastructure. So that's, that's excellent. It's one of the few large remaining sites in Urbana that can be developed with this much housing and served by infrastructure. Okay. So planned unit developments offer developers flexibility in applying zoning and development regulations. In this case, the applicant has applied for two waivers, one for reduced street width and one for reduced lot size. These waivers would allow the developer to maximize the provision of housing on the site. Without the waivers, the developer could build up to 14 single-family homes or about 10 duplexes for 20 units total. This condition would still require a few variances for lot minimums and streets and sidewalk requirements. So there would still be some, it wouldn't be a fully by right condition, but you can compare the 38 units to 14 single-family homes or 20 duplex units. Okay. Plan Commission recommended approval of the preliminary PUD, including waivers for the street width and lot width, and additionally recommended that the petitioner get verification regarding emergency access along Windsor Road, and that detailed site plans are presented with the final PUD. These detailed site plans would include all subdivision requirements in paved areas. And they also provided or recommended the two condition, following conditions, that the final development plans include a pedestrian connection to the existing sidewalk in the northwest corner of the site, and that the connection ties into the PUD sidewalks, which would be really roughly right here. You can see this very small easement, it's represented better in your packet where you have the larger, more detailed plans, but this is roughly where that sidewalk connection would be. And then a request, and requested that the petitioner consider alternative options for the dry basin stormwater retention pond, simply just to explore, you know, what could potentially go there in terms of landscaping or design. Right now, it is anticipated to just be a dry basin retention pond, which is required for the site. And the Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval of this PUD, preliminary PUD with the above-mentioned conditions and waivers. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to questions, there's been a request for a brief recess, so five minutes, give people a little break, and then we'll pick right back up.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, anybody who's been wondering what people are sniffing about up here, there was a concern of smelling something burning, and we just got clarification that there's nothing on site. The fire department is addressing that somebody in the neighboring area has been burning something very smelly that the HVAC system has picked up. So no worries about fires, but we do appreciate the fire department making sure that everything is safe. questions that folks have related to this preliminary PUD. Mary Alice?
So they are going to be asking for a smaller size width of the road as part of the PUD. What is the the width that they're gonna request? I mean, are we talking like a decrease of one foot? Are we taking a decrease of five feet?
So the street width, and it's described under waivers in your planning packet for the the document that was submitted to Plan Commission, I'm just scanning that quickly. The manual of practice requires residential streets to be at least 30 feet wide and private residential streets to be at least 24 feet wide. These would be private residential streets, so they would meet the minimum as defined in the manual of practice of, I think, 24 feet.
24 feet is what's on their, on their thing, but so they don't need a waiver for that?
It is, it does say here that ultimately the waiver may not be necessary. However, getting, granting a waiver at this time to reduce the street width would give the applicant flexibility to move forward and would allow them to develop plans for a final PUD, knowing that 24-foot streets are acceptable, whether they are public or private.
Okay, so then the question is, are these internal streets going to be considered private or public?
My understanding is that they are going to be private. They'll be.
So they meet, they won't need a waiver, then?
They might not need the waiver, yeah. But it's, it's, because this is not the final, it gives flexibility for adjusting the design. And, yep, as described, it may not be necessary, but adds flexibility.
And so the, I mean, if if the standard is 24 for private, I assume that the fire department won't have any concerns about the width of the road?
Right, so that's actually part of why the Plan Commission
Right.
recommended that we see the, that the detailed site plans are presented, and as part of that, they also are asking for the verification regarding emergency access to Windsor Road. So what will happen is with the, these detailed site plans, our city engineer and of course, the fire department will review that for, against our code and our manual of practice for compliance. So there, there wouldn't be a such, even if the 24-foot waiver was approved, regardless of acceptance of that waiver, they have to meet emergency access requirements, public or private.
And so, first of all, I appreciate seeing a preliminary separate from the final. That's nice to be able to to have that input. As I see it, it looks acceptable as long as we meet the other stipulations of the emergency vehicles, and certainly if we do approve it, we're not locking ourselves in, right? I mean, they have to meet the emergency vehicle access.
That's correct.
I just want to confirm.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice?
I guess my question was going to be, or is going to be, what is the, if you know what the emergency, the minimum or maximum emergency access is for that, also the retention pond.
Okay.
Now, is that meant to be like a little duck pond, or a little swimming hole, or, or?
No, it is purely for stormwater. So it would be primarily, and this is typical for, for dry basin retention ponds, where, not just to the site, but just generally. So it's meant to capture stormwater runoff and hold it, and then have it percolate, percolate through the ground or whatever membrane is in place slowly so that it doesn't flood the streets. So it, it could be landscaped, there may be ducks in it at certain points, but it's not really like an ornamental feature, it's truly an infrastructure, piece of infrastructure.
Okay, so it's a piece of infrastructure that will keep the water from, I'm trying to look, I'm not really, I've always said I'm not good at looking at these maps. For the house, the duplexes, is that to keep the the water from?
Yeah.
It'll drain from, it'll be going downhill from the duplexes?
That's a good question, and I, I'm sure that the petitioner can address that in the final site plan, but the intent would be for it to capture stormwater runoff from the entire area. So the streets and the surrounding areas, not just these two duplexes alone, it would capture the water from the surrounding area, and also any water probably that would accumulate if we had a, a large rain event on Windsor Road, that would potentially drain into either stormwater drains or could potentially go into the detention pond as well.
Okay, will any of these, will any of these, the infrastructure for any of this have its own stormwater infrastructure underneath the roads? Or is all of, are we, are we thinking in terms of having just this particular retention pond that will capture stormwater?
Yeah, because it's a private site, my understanding is that the, the drainage will be configured so that it'll go into the detention pond and, and leave the site as appropriate. I can't speak to the, those sections of the city code or that, that engineering at this time, but this is standard practice and required for this development. So I think we, you know, in the final site plan, we could, as the Plan Commission has asked for, I just want to make sure I get the wording exactly right, consider alternative options to the dry basin stormwater retention pond. It's my understanding that the stormwater will be discussed in more detail moving forward before final, and so we would certainly be able to get answers to those questions.
Okay, it, I just haven't had really good.
Sharice, just so you know, it's hard for people to hear your mic when you turn your head that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm having, my, my. I'm just thinking, I'm having, my experience with the Plan Commission has been somewhat shaky at best, so sometimes they will leave certain decisions up to the council that they themselves do not want to actually have to deal with. And that's why I'm trying to get more information regarding the retention pond and how this will, so that it doesn't become an issue later on within this PUD where water, and with climate change and so on and so forth, where water is held and becomes an issue if it doesn't drain down into the earth or underneath the city into some kind of sewer sanitation thing. So I would prefer to have more information regarding how that water might actually be retained, if there's going to be some kind of mosquito abatement issued, something that might keep people safe from disease and so on and so forth also in that area.
Before we get too far into discussion, just want to keep the question. Oh, just clarifying, just to see if there are any other questions, because I think you're raising some points that we might want to come back to and discuss, so just seeing if there are any additional questions. I don't want to cut you off, Sharice, but I do want to make sure that we see if, Grace, do you have any questions? And then James, I do see you, but I want to make sure we don't miss Grace.
Thank you, not at this time.
Okay, James?
Yeah, I would like to know what the flexibility they're looking for with regard to the road width, because we have something similar with the Glen Oaks Drive PUD, which is over behind your castle apartments, where there's a road that's like 19 feet wide. And I'm sure, I don't know, I'm pretty sure it's not our road, I think it's a private road, but I would guess if we asked our fire service folks how they feel about that, they would be unhappy. So why do they need that flexibility if it's going to be 24 feet wide?
Just to clarify, the waiver would be 24 feet if it's public or private. Now typically, without a waiver, if it's a public street, it has to be 30 feet wide. So this would allow them to build 24-foot wide streets regardless if those streets are public or private, although in conversation with the petitioner and in discussion with Plan Commission, it does seem like the applicant is leaning towards private streets anyway. So it just.
We would have to agree for them to be public streets, because then we're responsible for.
Right, that's right.
And repairing them.
That's right.
And then we'd ask them to do them 30 foot wide, so.
That's right, and it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like that's the direction that we're going in, it's just essentially what they're asking for is 24-foot streets in this development, which will likely be privately maintained.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Sorry, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Putting it on the regular agenda, I'll move approval ordinance number 2025-11029, ordinance to approve the preliminary planned unit development at 704 East Windsor Road, Plan Case Number 2510-PUD25, with the additional requirement that the roads, internal roads are marked as private, and there's further information on the retention pond. I think those are the two main things.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice with amendments and seconded by James, is there any discussion? Mary Alice?
No, I was just pointing up to Grace.
Grace, do you have any question, or discussion?
No, thank you.
In chambers, any discussion? Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say, thank you, sorry Grace, any opposed, please say nay. Ayes have it, that motion passes, thank you, and we will move on to item number three under new business, which is ordinance number 2025-11-030, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, rezone 905 West Oregon Street from R6 to CMU, and 907 and 909 West Oregon Street from R5 to CMU, Plan Case Number 2511-M25.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, we were motivated to cap the height at the 65 feet or five stories for this particular area, as it aligns with Imagine Urbana, because we were approached by Fairlon Capital to, with this potential development, which I will describe, with a request to rezone 905 West Oregon Street, 907 and 909 West Oregon Street to CMU. And to describe the site, the site contains three separate parcels in the 900 block of West Oregon Street. It is approximately 2/3 of an acre. The westernmost parcel is owned by the University of Illinois and is currently vacant. Until recently, it contained a building used by the music department. The building has outlived its usefulness and was demolished. The remaining two parcels contain apartment buildings that were built in 1990, sorry, the 1990s. The western two parcels are zoned R5, these two here, and the eastern parcel is zoned R6. Table one, sorry, we're not going to do the table. Fairlon and the university have been discussing redeveloping the three parcels with a multi-story building that would provide space for the university's School of Social Work, as well as multiple floors of apartments. The planned development aligns well with the university neighborhood designation in the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. However, the existing zoning does not allow for mixed-use buildings, only residential. In practice, the existing zoning also makes it difficult to develop high-density residential due to the combination of parking requirements, floor area ratios, and open space ratios, and required yards. The proposed rezoning to campus mixed-use would allow for both a mixed-use building and a higher-density residential building in an area identified as being appropriate for those things in Imagine Urbana. Also, I just want to draw your attention to this photo. The condition of 905 and 907 West Oregon definitely leaves something to be desired. The current buildings, again, were constructed in the 90s and are in need of repairs, and so this rezoning would allow for us to keep housing here, but it would also allow us to unlock that mixed-use potential, find that synergy with the university's School of Social Work, and it would allow for more attractive and inviting residential than what's currently there. Again, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval of this text amendment to the city council, and tonight we are joined by a representative of the petitioner, Bill Beebe, who's in the audience and is available to answer questions. So if you do have questions for him, please just invite him up to the mic or the table, whatever you prefer. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So I guess my main question, A, it's very sad that buildings less than 40 years old are in this kind of condition. But, you know, right now, this social work building has a mixed residential university and also business space there on Gregory. My main question is, is the vision that it would be something similar to what exists on Gregory right now, or would it be a completely different composition?
Yes, the concept is to be very similar to Gregory Place, where there would be some mixed-use retail on the first floor, an office level, where the School of Social Work would be close to some of their other existing spaces to help consolidate their currently spread, a lot of different places around campus and around town. And then additional three floors of residential to support that mixed use.
So that's the five floors, right?
Five floors, yes.
Okay, and, you know, parking is always an issue over there. Is, I think they have parking underneath, right, Gregory Place, there's parking, and then I think on the other side, there's actually underground parking, if that's correct?
Yes, Gregory Place has some grade-level parking that comes in. There's also an additional surface lot between these parcels and Gregory Place.
I walk it every day. I know those spaces well.
And this development would also incorporate some element of parking on the first floor as a grade level, behind the retail spaces.
Okay, so there would be grade-level parking? And is there, there's underground parking right now there, is that right?
Yes, the current buildings have approximately 42 spaces that are very lightly used. We currently have only 15 of those spaces rented for the 25-26 school year. About 17% of our occupancy by the bed is actually used in the parking.
Can I ask how much you charge for parking?
I don't have that figure with me.
I was curious if that was a factor.
It's not, it's not a great deal.
Okay, all right. So the idea is, A, to have something kind of as a similar structure to Gregory Place, B, to have some grade parking. How many units approximately are you thinking in terms of the residential piece?
The unit mix is still, we're looking at one, twos, and three bedrooms for the most part, about 123 beds is the plan, but we're still very early in the design concepts.
And how many beds currently exist in the two buildings that are still standing?
It's about 88 currently.
Okay, so increasing about, okay.
40% increase.
Okay, do you guys own the building next door? There's a brick building there.
Green Street Realty owns the next one, and the university owns the corner building. We did look at all five parcels at one point in our early developments, and between the university's use, what we thought the retail environment would support, and then the ability to get the other parcels, we've settled down to the three-lot development that's in front of you.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice?
Excuse me, my question is basically, what will happen with the families or the people that are currently in these apartment buildings?
This is almost 100% student right now, and so we will offer any existing residents who would want to carry over during the construction period, residents in one of our other buildings on our portfolio. We have right around 1,500 campus units right now, so we have plenty of spots to move people to.
Okay, and also, when you, your plan, I'm trying to find a picture of a plan, do you plan on consolidating the size, I mean, using all three of those lots and then making one big structure?
Yes, it would be one continuous structure, but it would have some undulation on, at least on the Gregory Street side, for some visual interest and whatever the code requirements are for facade.
And you're going to put the School of Social Work underneath at the, on the main level?
No, they would most likely be on the second floor. We would have actual storefront retail on the first floor, much like the Gregory Place Development has.
Okay, and then if that School of Social Work needs to expand, what happens?
That would be up to the university. Again, this is a secondary site for the School of Social Work, and they're pulling, they've done their studies, and I don't know what their entire complement of social workers are, to tell you the truth.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Grace, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Any other questions here in chamber? Is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I will make a motion. I'm just going to put this on the regular agenda, because everything seems to be going there right now. I will move for approval on to the city council agenda for approval, ordinance number 2025-11030, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, rezoning 905 West Oregon Street from R6 to CMU, and 907 and 909 West Oregon Street from R5 to CMU, Plan Case Number 2511-M25.
Second it.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Mary Alice?
I would just like to say that on the face of this, I think this looks like a good plan, I think that this is nice to have a mixed-use building here, maintaining residential options, but also increasing business options in the partnership with the university. This is going to be dominant by the university of this whole block, aside from the residential pieces and the businesses on the first floor, so I like this mixture here, appreciate the project being brought here to council, so I'm in support.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to move this on to the regular agenda, because again, this is not final action, we'll take a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes, thank you. We will move on to, thank you very much for your answers to our questions. The next item on the regular agenda under new business is, the agenda under new business is Resolution Number 2025-11-088R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for a housing needs study by the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission.
Thank you, I'm not sure if this is, I just would like to make a statement, so please tell me if this is allowed or not, but because I am filling in for an entire planning division, if these items have been moved to the regular agenda, I understand there will be more discussion, but I'd appreciate if there are specific questions, if you could send them to me in advance, that'll give me time to actually prepare and review and look at the zoning ordinance, so I would welcome just to anticipate any discussion on the regular agenda if I have an opportunity to prepare for that. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I'd like to introduce our proposed agreement between the City of Urbana and the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, or RPC. We are looking to contract with RPC to provide professional services for the development of a housing study, which we've been calling the Urbana Housing Needs Study. We have $50,000 secured in the FY '26 budget for the delivery of this, and just really briefly, I guess as a summary, the study would include data on the existing housing stock and resident demographics, quantifying the number and type of housing units needed by income level, and assessing gaps in housing stock by housing type, income, tenure, and student status. This will allow housing programs and policies to be developed with a data-driven approach, informed by a thorough understanding of the current housing stock and resident demographics. Also, I just, in honor of Imagine Urbana and the Plan Commission, or excuse me, the Comprehensive Plan, this does dovetail directly with Little Move 1.1, which specifically says that we need to conduct a comprehensive study of the housing market, including an affordable housing assessment, analyzing the existing housing supply, workforce trends, future demand, affordability levels, and land use. So it's a step towards that, and Little Move 1.1 was identified as a priority in Imagine Urbana. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to check in with Grace first this time, Grace, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. I will have just a brief discussion, but no question at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go this way this time, I'm not ignoring you, James.
So one thing that I'm curious about, whether this study
So, so one thing that I'm, I'm curious about whether this study will capture is I hear, you know, population, units available. Will also capture the opportunity for infill development? Like lots or areas that are available to meet housing needs if there was development there?
That's a really interesting question. Actually, as currently scoped, I don't believe we have an analysis of lots or potential lots. I actually think that that would be an exercise that the planning division could take.
If there was one.
Which there will be. We are hiring, we are actively hiring. But I, I think that as currently scoped, we're kind of pushing up against the fifty thousand as it is, but sort of doing an analysis of where the opportunities, once we understand what's needed, where could we build it? That's something we could absolutely do as a plan division with suitability analysis and GIS, and just taking sort of a more thorough approach to our, yeah, to available lots.
Yeah, the reason why I'm thinking about it is not just like vacant lots that you could build a duplex or a house on, but we have the space in the parking lot south of Lincoln Square that we've talked about putting into an RFP for development. We've got the former school administration space. I mean, there's, there's areas that I know we've been thinking about having, being a part of supplying housing. And, you know, if they're, if they're looking at housing and units and so forth, that captures, you know, what's, what's available. What we, what I don't think it feels like it's going to capture is what, what's the potential? Based on, you know, they come back and they say, you need two hundred of this kind of units. We, we also have to know what, you know, how do we paint on the canvas what that looks like? What's the canvas that we have to paint on, so to speak?
Is there a direct question?
Yeah, I, can I?
If it's in response to what, is it, is it a question or is it discussion? Are you okay if I skip you, Mary Alice, because you were next? Okay, Mayor Williams.
I was just going to ask, I understand what Quisenberry is asking. Is that something that we can simply ask RPC tomorrow, for instance? Because I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that it included vacant lots and things of that nature. But is technically a part of the, you know?
So, I think, I will do my best to respond. Let me know if this is not the question. But I, this is really to capture the gaps. So it's, follows a traditional housing needs assessment sort of structure and methodology. Just first and foremost, before, truthfully, before I can do anything in my role, I need to understand what our market is comprised of. That includes shadow markets and absentee landlords, and what's happening in these group homes and things. It's actually a huge scope of work that's going to require a lot of analysis. And so we really are pushing up against that fifty thousand dollar budget as it is. But I completely hear what the council member is saying in terms of understanding the application. We, we don't just want data, we want to understand how to apply that data. And so I do think that a follow-up analysis on potential available sites for development, sort of tapping into more of a supply and demand style analysis would, would absolutely be warranted and something that we could do as a division, or, sorry, as a city planning division.
And just to clarify, you're saying that subsequent to this, and when we're back up, just in terms of staffing, that's something that could potentially be done in-house?
Totally.
Okay, thank you. I, I heard that, but I wanted to make sure that we, we heard that piece too. Mary Alice, thank you for your patience.
No worries. So I, I had three questions. I'll, I'll take the easy one first. So in terms of data, what data they were going to use? They have the Champaign County Assessor's Office. And I'm wondering why the Cunningham Assessor isn't there? Because they have a lot of information.
Are you looking at a particular page in the scope?
Uh, it's just under analysis, and the packet is one hundred and nineteen, but I'm sure that's, it's like the very first page of proposal for the Urbana Housing Needs Study. And under analysis, it says compiling existing data sets.
Yep.
And in there, it has Champaign County Assessor's Office, but it does not include the Cunningham Assessor. And they're the people who actually assess our properties, unless James is going to correct me because he knows more about the county.
All, all the information that the Cunningham Assessor puts together gets given to the
The county?
County.
Okay.
Because that's where it goes into the tax, the tax system.
Tract rules, okay.
So, so while I understand why you're asking that, I, I think, I don't think we would need both.
Okay, fair enough. And then my, my next question is a little more complicated. As I'm sure you're well aware, there are different areas within Urbana that, you know, just like in any neighborhoods that are built up, there's like, oh, there's a single-family neighborhood here. There's a university neighborhood here. And I, I want to kind of understand the deliverable. If they come back and they say, all right, well, you need three hundred affordable housing units, because that's what the gap is in our community. What does that look like in terms of neighborhoods? If I look at, we were just talking about north of Green Street, south of university, that's like all apartment buildings except for like three single-family houses left, right? It's all apartment buildings. So would that mean that the staff would say, okay, we need three hundred affordable housing units, and we can put them anywhere? I'm trying to figure out the neighborhood context of the housing request, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, so thank you for that question. This is really meant to capture existing conditions. And it does not anticipate a future, in, in the sense that there's no recommendations coming out of this for, beyond there's a need for X. It doesn't say, and there's a need for X, and it needs to go here, here, and here. So we would take the data and review it as a staff, and then probably have to do the exercise that Councilmember Quisenberry is mentioning in terms of identifying potential locations. And then that would need to be packaged and presented. This is truly an, an effort to capture existing conditions today in twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six.
Well, I guess my point here is existing conditions, each neighborhood is, has different, like, not only age, but composition of housing, right? And so if I look at, let's, let's look at Grace's neighborhood that's primarily single-family, and there's a couple of duplexes down on the south, right? But then if we hear, okay, well, we really need some apartments that are one-bedrooms for six hundred dollars or less, does that mean that we're going to try and put those anywhere in where they don't exist? I'm just trying to figure out that puzzle piece.
So, a couple things here. So this would be, again, existing conditions analysis, which would inform policy decisions that could potentially be made. So, for example, if we do rewrite the zoning ordinance, or if we do recommend future rezonings to accommodate that need, that is something that could happen, but it, it would have to go through all of the established planning and council steps. There, there's no way, there's no way to go outside of the existing zoning. So if we needed to add more density to achieve our affordable housing goals, we would still have to rezone it and go through that process. There's no, we can't just magically plop down, you know, the three hundred units, hypothetical units, anywhere we would want.
So included in the, let me see if I can rephrase this a little bit. Included in the assessment of the existing housing stock? Where there'd be a geographic distribution of the different types of housing stock?
I think that would be reasonable to assume, understanding how this scope is written, that, that we're going to be doing a detailed enough level of analysis so that we could generally say the market in these, well, actually, in fact, yes, the, these sub, sub-markets within the larger market are comprised of a certain kind of housing. That would certainly be captured, yes.
Okay, but not the market, right? The actual area, the physical space, is what I'm saying.
I, I apologize, yes, the, the, the physical area.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
And then last but not least, but I think it is here. We've had conversations about, I call them startup houses. You know, the, I see here, it says analyze gaps in housing stock by all housing types, single-family. Certainly, when you get into that kind of income level, housing for a lot of people is out of reach. When you get, I mean, it's kind of crazy to me that you can get like quarter of a million dollars for a condo now. It's, it's, it's very unreachable for a lot of people. So I would like to know, do we have any opportunities within Urbana that would allow people to get into that housing, homeownership?
So I do see, I think the line that you're referencing says analyze gaps in housing stock by all housing types, i.e. single-family, multifamily, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And I'm just, I guess I'm marrying that single-family affordability piece a little bit with that homeownership. I, you know, there, there are areas neighboring communities that the entry into buying a, a family house is over two hundred thousand dollars. And I would hope that we would have lower-priced housing options in Urbana. But I can't say that with any.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
No, not yet. I would love a motion. We're just getting through questions. But now we're good, if you want to make one.
All right, I want to do a motion, Resolution Number twenty-two-five-dash-eleven-dash-zero-eight-eight-R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for a housing needs study by the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission. Going to the consent agenda.
Moved by Sharice, is there a second?
I would second it if it wasn't on the consent agenda.
Oh, my goodness, okay. On a regular agenda, I'm trying to make this go quickly.
And then I'll second.
All right, moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion?
I would, go ahead, Grace.
Yeah, go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. I just want to say that I appreciate that we're doing this study. I think that it will be really helpful to have some third-party data to assess things. And we've heard a lot of support for this study throughout the Comprehensive Plan finalization. And I did, on another point, just want to clarify that I also am not for NIMBYism. And as far as I'm concerned, we can put affordable apartments in Ward Six suburbs in my neighborhood. I don't agree with warehousing people to certain areas, or giving preferential treatment to certain neighborhoods in the name of preservation. And I, I don't think that's what Mary Alice would say necessarily. I just wanted to clarify my stance on things. And while I think that neighborhood characteristics are important, I think it's also important to be aware of some of the other issues that come into play as far as city planning as well. I think that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you, Sharice?
Um, I was just going to ask Olivia too. Because this popped into my head, you know, we're talking about a housing study. And one of the issues that we have had as a city in the past few years is having a lot of out-of-state owners of property and out-of-city owners of property that do not maintain their properties. And then we end up having, we've lost housing because of the fact that we have no ordinance or no legislature in place as a city, I think, to try to, is there anything that the city itself can do to main, to maintain and, and maybe even upgrade what our housing situation can be? Is there something, is this, will this analysis tell us if there's some kind of legislature or anything that needs to be passed that we can pass? Matthew, you can look into this as well. That would, so that we don't end up having to put people out of homes, put people out of a home, that they, affordable home, that they may really need, based on the fact that we cannot enforce or, or make in some way these property owners that do not live in the state even, maintain the properties they own here in Urbana. And I would ask that, if that's, if that's a plausible or possible analysis that they might be able to include as far as us getting some kind of a housing, how our, what our housing needs may be, that I think that is a need.
Yeah, can I respond? Okay, so I totally hear you and appreciate the sentiment. This, as scoped, is truly a, a data exercise. It doesn't include policy recommendations. That would probably be at cost. Now, with that said, that is something I also hope our future planning division and these bodies can, can work towards, right? Is thinking about ordinances or policies that could be, that would be appropriate for Urbana that are born out of our unique situation here in this unique market. And I, I just want to also sort of respond by saying, we are with the rental registration program and our systematic code enforcement. We are, we do have some mechanisms in place, right? If there are a number of code violations in place over a period of years, we can take action. We do have a rental registration program that requires a, a local contact, and we have a better sense relative to our peer communities of actually who, which owners are here and which owners are absent. So it is something that we have information on, and we've been trying to respond to. And I think there's a lot of potential there to develop a policy that could, could potentially give us some solutions towards these issues that we face. So I don't want you to feel like I'm simply saying, no, this can't go into this analysis because it's not scoped. I think it can't go into this analysis because it's not scoped, but it doesn't mean that those conversations have to stop necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Olivia, thank you for filling in for your team. We've really appreciated all your time this evening. But we do have a, a motion and a second for the regular agenda. So I think we're at a point to call it. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. All right, final item of New Business is Resolution Number twenty-two-five-dash-eleven-dash-zero-eight-nine-R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class A designation for Twenty-Five O'Clock Brewing Company LLC, two oh eight West Greg Street, Suite one oh one, Urbana, Illinois.
And I will speak to this, think something that everyone will be excited about. They are changing essentially from a micro brewery to all alcohol. So obviously, you know, that, that change in classification requires approval. So that's the reason behind this.
Any questions? James?
Are they still going to be brewing their own beer?
Yes.
So this is in addition?
Just adding to the fun, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Go ahead, Mary Alice.
I mean, I'm tempted to put on the consent agenda, but it'd be the only thing on there, so I'm not going to. I know Sharice tried. I'll move for approval on to the city council regular agenda. Resolution Number twenty-two-five-eleven-zero-eight-nine-R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class A designation for Twenty-Five O'Clock Brewing Company LLC at two oh eight West Greg Street, Suite one oh one.
Is there a second? Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Grace, just making sure we didn't miss you. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Alright, seeing none here in chambers either, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say nay. That motion passes. Alright, next on the agenda is council input and communication. Any, James?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to apologize for being late tonight. I had a good reason. The, the school district has initiated a committee to look at the name of the sixth grade center. And I was asked to serve on that. And they're gonna be doing their meetings on Mondays at, from six to seven. So I may be late again in the future. Hopefully, there won't be too many of these, but that is why I was late. And those meetings, I think the next meeting is going to be the 10th, and those are open to the public because they are under FOIA and they have time for public comment. So if anybody wants to come talk about how they feel about that, they should come to that meeting. It's being held in the library of the expanded building.
And Mary Alice?
I was just gonna say, the first meeting of the alternative task force is this Thursday at 3:30 at the IMC.
Grace, any comment?
No, thank you.
Um, all I wanted to, I wanted to, once again, just kind of discuss, when we, when we talk about our housing issues, and I know, I don't know about anybody else, but I've been extremely frustrated with our inability to, or, or our lack of will, I don't know, as a city, to, um, have, make people accountable for the properties that they own and to keep them, so that we can have housing and affordable housing for, for people here in Urbana. We, we all too often, I think, think that low income and, and affordable are the same, and they're not necessarily the same, but, they're not synonymous, but we, when I consider what we're going through as a nation and how we are trying so hard to, to make up for the, the lack of compassion that we seem to have in this country right now regarding folks that are, are not in a income bracket that's, that's more than a million dollars a year. I think that the, the city, because we've had so many issues, not just here in Urbana, but in Champaign, and with apartment buildings being condemned and so on and so forth, we have to be, I think, really on the, on top of things when we, when it comes to even PUDs being built. Are we staying on top of people, are we staying on top of folks with making sure that they are, that they're, that our, our inspectors are making them, you know, that they have the correct types, types of, of supplies and everything that they're supposed to be using? Are they, are they following all of the, the rules and regulations as far as building codes and so on and so forth? But moreover, if you buy a piece of property, you're responsible for that, but you're also, you're also responsible for somebody's life, so to speak, and their quality of life. And we need to keep that in mind and we need to be able to hold people accountable. I don't care how far they live and own property here. We need, we need to have some kind of ordinance where we can slam somebody and get money that they, and make them actually do what they're supposed to do as landowners. So I think that's something that we, that needs to be discussed and maybe looked into. What are legal, what we can legally do so that we don't have to take up that kind of, of slack from another city because of those kind of issues.
Thank you. I'll quickly, I think, piggyback off of that and echo my, or express my support for making sure that we're doing everything we can in terms of compliance for landlords, regardless of where they are. But I also just want to say thank you to the city staff, especially for a, a part of our staff that is really bare bones right now. It's really amazing to see some of these changes coming forward. I know that there were some additional questions, but I think it's, it's showing that the city is moving in that direction of trying to be creative of how do we increase our housing stock and also understand what we have and what is needed. So I really appreciate the items that were on the agenda tonight. Final call for council input. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.